Are we good? Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the December 16th, 2024 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Will you rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I want to thank everyone who's here tonight, and I would like to just take a moment to state that our thoughts and prayers are with the Madison, Wisconsin, community tonight. The first order of business is to have public participation. If you are a member of the public and would like to make a comment, come to the microphone standing in the back aisle and state your name and address. And if you're a student, you do not have to state your address. So for that, I'll open it up.
Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah? Is it on the microphone? Hello? Hi, my name's Maureen Tracy. I live at 17 Burt Street. I've been in Merrimack for about thirty-five-ish years. I have four adult children who went through the Merrimack School District. And I was on the schedule today, but not for the Rotary. Since I was already written in, I decided to come into some public comment in regards to the superintendent building. I was able to invite, to visit with the superintendent the other day, and as I walked in, it is very cozy in there, for sure. However, it is so outdated and I would say dangerous. And I know the Merrimack community has looked at different things between the superintendent's office and a new library and a new fire and, and safety, you know, plaza or whatever. But I've been at a lot of schools in the state of New Hampshire, and I just feel a bit embarrassed that people would come here to our district and meet with our administrators in what used to be a home. And it's, it's been a long time, so since forever that I can remember, as well as the Special Education Service Building. People are crammed downstairs and upstairs, and as Bill had said, his drawers there used to be like a closet or bureau. So I just wanted to express that I know this is budget season, and I know the Merrimack community, including myself, got a, you know, big tax bill. However, I do believe that this is really something important for our community. That's all. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more public comment, we will move on to our budget questions and answers. I want to invite our Merrimack Middle School administration to come sit at our table. Yes, go right ahead.
Nice to see everybody. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Krigus Bozeman. I'm the principal of Merrimack Middle School in my second year with the school. And, and I'm joined by the always incredible Kathy Hoppa, who's our assistant principal. And then we wanted to talk to you about a couple of things, mention a little bit about our budget, as well as kind of give some highlights and some updates on what we've been up to over at the middle school. And we've been up to quite a bit. It's been a busy, a busy year over at the middle school, a busy fall, and some exciting things, a lot having to do with teaching and learning that we've put in beginning this year. First off, we have our wit and wisdom curriculum for the seventh grade. That has been gone with all of our seventh grade teams this year, and also in preparation to prepare for installing into eighth grade for next year as well. We also have a new science curriculum that we've been working on this fall, Open SciEd, that works for both seventh grade and eighth grade, as well as sixth grade as well. So we've been really working hard to implement that this fall with a lot of positive feedback. We also have, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy quickly to talk about our world language adjustments that we have done for seventh and eighth grade as well this year. So keep it over to Kathy.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk a little bit about the changes that we've made to our world language program. There were some questions that came up, I think, from some of you regarding that as well. And it's super exciting and I think impactful, these changes for a multitude of reasons. But the biggest that change is that seventh graders, all seventh graders with very few exceptions, take a quarter each of Spanish and French. So that, many of you who've had older kids know that in seventh grade, they used to have an option of taking a full year of one or the other. Now we made it into a more exploratory model where students take a quarter of each exploratory French and Spanish. This has given them the opportunity to obviously gain more experience with each language and then kind of really get their footing before they have to make a choice for the eighth grade. That was a really impactful change. It also has allowed students who are in need of interventions, whether it's Title I or special education, they can take both. So they could take or, or utilize their special education services or Title I and also take, in many cases, both world languages, which before was not an option because they had to do either or. So that's opened up our offerings for all of our students in a really important way. It also helps the exploratory piece because J-Muse is not offering their program anymore. We've given it, we've expanded it so they can have that choice as well in seventh grade. That leads into eighth grade. So the eighth grade world language offerings are both one-year-long courses. Next year will be the first year that will offer credit-bearing French or Spanish, or eighth grade French or Spanish. So of course, if a student has decided in seventh grade that they really like Spanish, they do well in the exploratory Spanish class, they are able to take a credit-bearing Spanish class, class with the intention of taking Spanish II as freshmen in high school. If they feel like they don't want a rigorous world language class in addition to all their other coursework, they can take eighth grade Spanish or French, which is also a year-long class. But then they would probably take Spanish or French I as freshmen in high school. So that's a really exciting change. The credit-bearing obviously will start next year, but we've kind of set the stage with the quarter-long seventh grade classes for now. And it's a really exciting opportunity for our students because many more students are now taking world language in seventh grade than before.
That's great. Thank you, Kathy. And as she mentioned earlier, it also opens up some intervention opportunities for students. And so more students are going to be, are currently able this fall to utilize their win block or what I need block for them and based off of our new exploratory model. We've also installed our academic advisory so that all students every day can have some opportunity to either see a teacher, get some extra help, catch up on work, what have you. And this year, we also have Title I reading and math, fully staffed and, and operating this year, which has been exciting for the fall. Our performance arts groups, our concert band and chorus has been able to meet every day this year and during the school day and never conflicting with each other. So if there is a musician who is in band as well as chorus, they do not conflict in their periods. The one exception being on Friday afternoons when they do full band rehearsal, a student might not be able to attend both of those. But it's been great because the musicians have been able to practice their instrument every single day or to sing every single day. And the, you know, big performance assessment is tomorrow night, our winter concert. So we invite everybody to come and join and check it out. It should be a, a great time tomorrow evening at the middle school. We had a very successful fall with our athletics program, highlighted by our boys soccer team and our field hockey team, both making the tri-county finals this year. They finished as runner-ups each this year, so that was a really exciting fall for them. And a, a new thing that we put in this year, which was exciting with the help of Mr. Dzikki and Mr. Chavanel, was a breakfast program at the middle school, which we haven't had before. Where students, if they miss the most important meal of the day, can still show up and purchase something that they can fuel up with. And if any student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, that breakfast is free of charge for them. So that's been a really positive thing that I wanted to highlight and thank the district for helping support that program for us. Pardon me. And so moving into some other pieces now, thinking about budget, we, we spent some, some time last year kind of building the systems and building our general education classrooms. And so this year, a lot of what we're hoping to build off of is our unified arts programs, starting with our art class, our visual arts class. They, they've been working a lot with printmaking as one of the kind of unique mediums for the, the middle school. We don't have a kiln, so we don't really do a lot of ceramics or pottery. And so this is a unique media that they experience in middle school, particularly the printmaking. And our, about ten years ago was when they stopped using kind of these, these presses that they used to use for printmaking because they became damaged and not used. And so what we've been using are individual pieces of wood and individual pieces of material that students etch out to then turn around and make a, a print with. It can be pricey, can be costly. So our, our teachers are hoping that by adding an additional press, then that way the students will be able to have printmaking both in seventh grade and eighth grade. And then also the printmaking clubs as well. And they think that it's an investment and will also save costs in the long run. That we won't have to buy the individual blocks for students to carve out where the press can just print on regular standard copy paper that we have and also use a lot less ink, so on and so forth. So they, we, we have two of them right now. One's kind of beyond repair. They're trying to hammer it out to see if it can work. But really, in order for both art classes, both our teachers to be able to utilize it, they were hoping to get an additional press, make an investment for the printmaking. We also, in our health class, we have been instructing in seventh grade about CPR, hands-only CPR. Don't do any sort of, you know, mouth-to-mouth resuscitation work. But really, understanding about chest compressions and signs to look for, things about Good Samaritan laws, so on and so forth. And they've been experimenting that and instructing with that in health class. And one of the things that they use are the CPR mannequins. And we are hoping to get one more CPR mannequin so that both health teachers will have the ability to use it at the same time. And, you know, the one that we have is also kind of going through a little bit of wear and tear when the, when the kids are, you know, practicing their chest compression. So that was hoping, that was something that they were hoping to do. We don't, we don't offer a certification for that, for the CPR. It's mostly just kind of some introductory things to AEDs and to techniques so that hopefully in the event of an emergency, students know what to look for. In our music department, back in 2004, they purchased keyboards so that students could be exposed to music theory and practice basic keyboarding techniques. And then in 2008, we began a two-keyboard-per-year replacement program. And so they've been kind of following that throughout. The keyboards work very, very well, and they get well-used, I should say, for both seventh and eighth grade. They work on that for the general music. And so the keyboards are replaced two per year as part of the replacement program. So we're hoping to replace those. In our tech ed department, we wanted to expand a little bit of our offerings and build off of not just our STEM programs that we do and our STEM projects, but also incorporate some more digital content creation for kids. That seems to be something they're very much engaged in. So we want to purchase some digital cameras for recording so students don't use their own personal phones or to record. They can have something specifically for tech ed that they can then videotape, put into the computer, edit, and be able to create some content. And then also Dash.Robots, and they're kind of some, teach some good basics about coding and computer coding for robots to be able to kind of work on some of the, the computer engineering side. So that was something that the UA is hoping to build off of. You know, we were, we were really excited about some of the UAs being able to offer these kind of various programs. And it gets kids excited about, you know, things besides just our core instruction, which is, which is really great. So we were hoping to include those. And kind of the same world about kind of replenishment was with our health office, with our nurse, Mrs. Davenport. And in speaking with Ms. Davenport, over the last few years, she had been receiving some really generous donations for consumables, mostly around, you know, deodorant for kids, feminine hygiene products, what have you. But those all came from donations. They came from companies that were willing to donate. The way Ms. Davenport describes it as, you know, those have dwindled over the years, almost where we can't really rely on those as much anymore. And so her supply, of course, has dwindled. And what she wants to do is, you know, put that into part of the budget. So then that way, you know, if a student is in need of something at that moment in an emergency, she's able to provide that for the, for the student. Because she says that that's a pretty regular occurrence for her. So she wants to be able to put that into budget so she doesn't have to rely on donations and run out of those. One of the, pardon me, find the cold everyone's got, so I appreciate your patience. The, she also is, she uses some bottled water for students where if they come down and they're not feeling great and, you know, hydration is so important, a lot of times she finds that they're not always hydrated. So she'll, she'll give them some cups of water whilst they're in the nurse's station, but then she likes to give them something to take out back to class. And she likes to use the, the little bottles of water, the little aquapods, because we don't have a, a water bottle filling station where you can kind of put the water bottle in and pour in. And so she found that the little ones are able to fit under the bubblers and are able to fit under the bathroom sinks because that's what we use to fill the bottles. And then that way, if a student doesn't have a water bottle with them, but they're sick and ill, she can give them the little aquapod to be able to take up and kind of keep her using. So she's, she's found that she's usually put those into the, her budget, and sometimes she's even had to pay out of pocket. So she was hoping to kind of incorporate a little bit more of that so that on the times when students need to stay hydrated and take away any excuses that they don't have a bottle, she at least can send them off with something. And moving on to some other opportunities for students is in the world of athletics. And particularly with, as anyone who's, you know, spent some time in the athletic world, you know that it's all about the team, it's all about the coach, it's all about the experience. And what we wanted to do was take a look at our coaches' stipends that we've been looking at. And from, from the history we've been trying to dig up and trying to uncover, we, we haven't been able to find a coaching increase in stipends in over ten years for some of our coaches that, you know, put in some, some good hours with kids. And, and as we know, they, it's in middle school and in any level, right, the coach really is responsible for making that a great experience for students. And so in kind of working with Mr. French from the high school and working with, you know, Ms. Fazlick, we were trying to see like where would that, what, what would be like a comparable stipend to put up, put that stipend up to? And also to tie it to something and provide some rationale for it. Whereas again, from, and maybe I need to do a little more digging, but the, the history we found is it looks like someone just picked a number and said, this is what we're going to assign the coaches, and it's kind of stayed at that number. And whereas one of the things we feel is comparable is the role of a freshman coach at the high school. It's about an eight-to-nine week season, usually Monday through Friday, where it's slightly different is a little bit of, you know, supervision afterwards. We need to make sure that every student has a ride home and that kind of situation where sometimes the freshmen might have, be able to get a ride or walk. Whereas we want to make sure that, you know, the eighth graders or seventh graders have, you know, some supervision in, in all areas of athletics. So we feel that that was, that was comparable. And so kind of working in having our eighth grade, excuse me, our middle school coaches be able to match what the freshman coaches are getting, we feel would be a, a good up in their stipend, as well as assistant coaches as well. Because every year, we find ourselves trying to scramble a little bit to fill our coaching positions. This last fall, we were, had about two coaching positions that we started the year vacant with. We were able to fill those. But one coach has already decided not to come back, so we already have a fall vacant position as well. And a lot of our assistant coaching positions are vacant. And so we were hoping to try and encourage more people to, to join and stay on. And we really love when teachers can participate and community members can participate. It just makes it a much more, you know, kind of community feeling. So that was something that we were hoping to add into this year's budget. And then also in the world of athletics is being able to expand opportunities for kids. Anytime we can make, there's a demand for that, and we always want to try to meet that demand. And particularly over the last three years, since the fall of 2021, we've had to unfortunately turn away more than twenty male athletes for soccer every fall. Sometimes upwards of twenty-five. I think this last year, we had twenty-four students that unfortunately didn't make the team just because we didn't have room for them. And so one of the things we were hoping to do was explore the idea of a B-team soccer for them. We have about six teams in the tri-county division, the tri-county league, that have B-team soccer right now. And what we would want to do for this year coming up is before we petition to have a B-team, we'd want to try it on, and we'd want to try to see what that would look like for us. And we think we can keep it at a reasonable cost because any team that has a B-team would either, you know, come to us or we would travel with them, travel on the same bus as our A-team. So it wouldn't be a, an additional transportation cost. We would, of course, want to, you know, have a coach and give a stipend to that coach. But even things like uniforms and soccer balls, we could probably, you know, do some hand-me-downs to at least try it for the B-team. We don't have a B-team soccer for girls, partially because in the last few years, we haven't cut more than six athletes. So even if we were, you know, to hold a B-team or to have that as an offering, we wouldn't really have the, the athletes to fill that. In the fall, we do offer our, our volleyball team as well as the field hockey team. So we feel that that's maybe why, you know, some of the girls have the opportunities to go into those sports and just a little bit more than, than boys. So this was really like a boys' thing that we wanted to try and, and experiment with. And we think that would offer, it'd be a win-win. It would offer those kids an opportunity to play for the middle school and then also provide a, you know, a feeder program and a development team for those kids. So we think it would have, you know, some good range all, all around. And we also want to even explore the idea in the springtime as well to offer an additional piece in lacrosse, actually, if I could kick it over to Kathy.
Yeah, so just as Mr. Bozeman said about, you know, expanding opportunities for our students, students started asking about having a scholastic lacrosse program more than two years ago. And it's been a conversation that they've asked for pretty frequently, I would say. We know that, you know, obviously the, the town of Merrimack has a very robust lacrosse program, but students at the middle school age just love representing their school, right? And that's just so important to them. So we would love to be able to offer that in addition to the other sports we offer in the spring. Dave Babbin provided some numbers. All but three schools in our league in the D1 group do have middle school lacrosse programs, including our neighbors Amherst, Hollis, London Dairy, Milford, and Bedford. So we have competition close by, right there, ready to go. And I know our students are thrilled that we're just entertaining the conversation now. So thank you for that.
And so those were some highlights from the budget that we're hoping to present for you folks. And I know we, we appreciate all the questions that we had from the board, and so we tried to answer as much of those as we could, but we're happy to, you know, entertain more and.
So there was one that is connected to one that you did answer, page eight, and that's account number 1213407861021. And the question was, why was this over in 2324, and have you budgeted enough for FY26?
And that was for health supplies?
Yes.
That was my question, and I was kind of assuming that the answer was probably, yeah, but I am curious about that. Have you, have you budgeted enough?
Yeah, and I, I can go back and double-check. I know that when, you know, things like, you know, AED pads and AED equipment, I know that we did purchase in the last couple of years. I'm curious to see if that was, you know, part of the reason. I'm happy to look into that and, and get some information about that.
Krigus, that was, that was exactly where I was going to go. When I think of the health supplies and overages, it's usually the AED pads or the batteries or whatever. So that's what I would postulate also.
And we did purchase some because not every team had an AED that we traveled with. So we, we recently purchased in the last year was some, brand-new AED machines for each one of our athletics teams to travel with.
So I would venture to say that, that's your answer.
But I can, but I'll verify that, so.
And, and just for people watching, it's not a very large dollar amount at all that it's over. I was just curious and wanting to make, make sure that we were being mindful and planning adequately.
Oh, thank you for that.
So the, going back to the CPR, so the seventh graders have an intro course, but they're not cer, they're not getting certified. Is the teacher certified in American Red Cross?
Aren't, she's, she's certified herself, but not as an instructor.
Okay.
So she does not.
And so I, I guess what, in the future, you know, what would it take for us to certify seventh graders? You know, like it's a, it's a nominal fee in first aid, so they actually have more confidence because they are tested on their skills. So they're going to leave that classroom with those skills. And then going back to the AED, also learning how to, you know, as a seventh or eighth grader, if, you know, their teacher has a heart attack in the classroom, like, how can they use it? Because it's a really good skill for everyone to know.
We agree. In fact, we were doing a little bit of research with our health teachers just around that, and most states even have a, you know, a requirement that students become CPR certified.
Right, right. And just that, just that they know, like, you know, make sure the scene's safe, you know, open the airway, call 911. Those three steps right there can save someone's life. But if they can have just a, a little deeper skill, I think that would be amazing.
Yeah, it could make a great, big difference for sure. So there's definitely some interest in there, and I think they're motivated to do so.
May I make a comment also? To our credit, our HR director, Melissa Fazlick, has arranged for an audit to be conducted to make sure all of our AEDs are, are working properly throughout the entire school district.
It's, it's critical because, you know, I was in a budget meeting once where they were going over a budget on an AED and it passed. And then honestly, the very next time when the AD, it barely came in, it got used and saved a person's life. So it's, it happens, you know, and so to have them readily available, having people trained to use them and not afraid to use them. And then, you know, to make sure that they're all, you know, properly, it's, you know, stored and, and up to date is perfect.
It's, it's critical. I will tell you, we lost a track coach about twenty-five to thirty years ago in my former community. He had a fatal heart attack right out on the field adjacent to the track, and there were no AEDs at, at that particular point in time. Could have saved his, his life.
Yeah, we were one of the first districts around years ago because of a, a school board member. And let me throw a shout out to Mr. Pat McGrath, who was traveling through airports all over the place. And he's obviously was in insurance, and he mentioned that at a board meeting. So that was the first time decades ago that we purchased these. But now, as Bill said, Melissa Fazlick going through, actually inviting the state to come in and working with the nurses and administration to go through our AEDs, see if they're in the right spots, see if everything is, is up to speed. Because we've been just kind of handling this on a case-by-case basis. We haven't looked at this in a kind of holistic view of district-wide, where do we need to be?
Any other comments or questions on the middle school budget?
This isn't a question. It was just something that I noticed when I was going through it and reading the, the pages is that a lot of those requests for new equipment, and you talked about them because a lot of people ask questions about them with the, the block printing press. The alcohol awareness goggles didn't get mentioned, but the, the, there's a band saw. There's, there's a couple of things like that. So it sounds like you're, you're asking for a lot, but there's a corresponding decrease in other line items for new equipment. So where there were new purchases last year, the things that got replaced, then they're now working fine. And so just my, my quick math, this wasn't like exact math, but it was actually all of those, all of that additional equipment was actually down a little bit, only about $2,000, but still down a little bit from last year. So we're still, we're adding all of these things and we're improving all of these programs and we're still being mindful of cost. We're not just piling a bunch more things on. And I wanted to make sure that that got, got mentioned.
Thank you, Naomi.
And as far as athletics go, you know, I think a question that people always have is if we're going to be adding new sports, which obviously from my background, I'm, you know, all for athletics. I think it's a very critical part of education, that it's not going to come at the cost of programs that we're already funding. And so, and then to have the formula on how we're funding programs, because there are sports like wrestling, for example, that is a lower cost than maybe boys' basketball or girls' basketball. Like, you know, so how do we, how do we fund them? You know, does the athletic director meet with the coaches and say, what are your needs for next year? And then come up with some kind of, you know, like, we're going to rotate the uniforms, all the things that you do that the public, you know, should hear. This is how we do our jobs.
Great, thank you.
I just want to say too that I appreciate that you are adding, you know, you're looking to add the B-team for soccer and the lacrosse options because I know that has come at parent request. Parents are calling and saying, you have enough students to fill a B-team. Why are we not doing this when many surrounding towns are? I've spoken to those parents and I've, you know, encouraged them to speak to you. And so I know that that is you responding to a, a parent saying, my kids are going home. parent saying, my kids are going home and playing on video games when they'd love to be on the soccer team and they could be on the soccer team because, if we had a B-team, you know, and, or if we had lacrosse, or they are, they are asking for that. And so I appreciate that. That is coming from parents and that is your response to their requests. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And by the way, I coached, um, middle school girls softball for five years and I think my stipend is the same stipend as you're paying them now. And that is how many years ago. I'm not kidding. When I saw that stipend, I think that's what I got paid.
I think that's right.
All those years ago.
May, may I make a, a, a comment to that? Uh, I've always been a proponent of having coaching stipends and co-curricular stipends in a collective bargaining agreement. And I don't think that has been the history in Merrimack, but I think we needed to explore that because we want to have some empirical basis for knowing what to pay a, a coach and a co-curricular activity, uh, staff member, uh, and, and not just, uh, have no basis for the calculation of that stipend.
And I, and I'd want to say that I would absolutely agree with that because also with that increase of pay would come an increase in accountability. And I think that's something that many of us have been looking for, for many years.
And I will make the last comment. Um, based on the conversation you and I had earlier in the fall, I have been encouraging the principals to find a way to volunteer more with the community for co-curriculars. And I mentioned it at the last board meetings, particularly for, um, our students with disabilities to be even more involved and be able to fund that. So I just want to encourage you again, um, to begin exploring that initiative, as I've stated to the other principals.
Great, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your time and for your detailed information. We appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you. Have a great holiday.
Yes, you too. Okay, I'd like to invite our high school administration to come up to the desk and share with us their budget. Double check that your mic is on. Okay, good.
So I just want to, um, say we're happy to be here. Oh, it's greener now. Then I hope you had a nice day at school. It's good to see you again. Just to start to talk about the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, uh, you'll find an overall increase of less than ten percent with many level funded and decreased line items. Uh, the decision to move the Merrimack High School library budget from the district IT budget, uh, to the Merrimack High School budget is, um, part of the increase. We spent a lot of time, uh, this fall, uh, continuing to work on putting budget items in the correct budget usage lines. Uh, this has resulted in some large increases and decreases in several areas as we move, uh, money to budget lines that properly fit the items being purchased. In the, in our athletic budget, uh, the significant increase in the athletic officials' home game management line is due to the request to have a Merrimack police detail at every home game and match for safety reasons. And I'll talk uh, more about that later. That was a, a subject of some of your questions. Um, the increase in the athletic equipment, both new and replacement li- replacement lines is to purchase new blue football uniforms. The current uniforms were bought in two thousand nineteen. We want to buy new championship banners for athletics and academic teams and other necessary items that need replacements such as volleyball standards and lacrosse nets. In our co-curricular area, oh, I just skipped ahead. With the discontinuation of the gifted and talented program, the co-curricular lines have had a lot of movement. Supply and transportation lines within the co-curricular budget have been increased to include the costs that were formerly covered by the gifted and talented program. The co-curricular membership line has been reduced even though we have added three honor societies for music, science and Spanish by moving athletic memberships to the administration membership line where they, which, which is where they belong. Uh, the lodging costs for the music department's festivals have also been moved from co-curricular, co-curricular memberships to co-curricular, co-curricular travel. In commu- and computer education, the budget lines that are used by the sixth to twelfth grade tech coordinator have an overall decrease this year, but many of the individual lines show large increases and decreases. The supply line and the equipment line have a drastic decrease as much as, as much of the expenditures for those lines in the past were actually used for necessary school-wide software. The software line now reflects those needs. Some of the items that were purchased by the coordinator in the past for specific departments have now also been moved to department lines as needed. In the marketing area, there's a decrease in the marketing supply budget because for the past several years, most of the, the supply money has been spent on necessary sports marketing software programs. We have moved that expenditure to the marketing software line along with the required software for the early college credit and marketing, which was formally paid for from the computer education line as mentioned above. Social science area, the, the requests for new civics textbooks is necessated uh, by the New Hampshire Department of Education requirement for students to pass the civics exam as a graduation requirement. Our current textbooks in use by the department were published in two thousand and nine. They're out of date. Uh, and for example, they refer to Senator Barack Obama. So that's basically a summary of our big-ticket items and our, the, the necessary changes that we worked on in the fall. And we'd like to just open up to any questions you may have.
Do you want to start? Go ahead.
So, so I'm happy about the championship banners. One of my very best friends, Sue Sheridan, was the, uh, spirit coach forever. She won a lot of championships. Jenna's sister was, uh, the captain of the team and there's no banners and they're put away someplace. And so every time she goes in that gym, she's like, where are the banners? So, um, that we're gonna go back and get banners and we're gonna start because there's uh, a long history of a lot of teams that won championships and to, to find those banners and find out, you know, I know she, she goes to the games because of her grandchildren, but I hear it every time, like, there's no banners. So, so thank you for getting banners and I hope we're gonna start, you know, researching, put them back up so we can have that pride.
I had a comment that followed up with that because I wanted to make the public aware that it wasn't just, um, athletics that were getting banners. It was things like the, um, Granite State Challenge where we've been champions for a couple of years in a row now. And so that's really important to, to honor those, uh, people as well and for robotics and yeah.
Right, and what they usually do is they would put Granite State Challenge and put the years, you know, so like, so, because some people say, well, you don't want to have them all over the place, but you can, you know, especially a program that wins a lot, but there's a lot of pride that comes with the banners.
Yep, that's exactly what we're doing because right now we have, they're, they're given one each time that they win. So we have to put that one up and it's just that one year with the, you know, the recent photos, but that, that's gonna be next. We're gonna have the years kind of streamed through. Yeah.
Right, especially like if you go to Lake West High School when they, they, they won girls' soccer for like ever. West High School, right? And so they have like, you know, they could never, their whole gym would be filled. So they have like all the years like that and I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, we're excited.
Okay, so the first question is a comparison between athletics spending and co-curricular spending, including the number of kids served in various sports and activities.
So I don't have, we don't have at this moment what the current spending for both of those are currently. What I can share with you though is there, there are, have been four hundred and ninety-eight different athletes sign up for one or more sports, uh, so far this year. And, and we have, uh, obviously spring ahead of us. And advisors for all the co-curricular clubs have submitted their, uh, numbers for the fall and estimates for the winter and spring. And there are over nine hundred and thirty-six students, uh, signed up to participate in, in, in something, uh, throughout the year. And obviously some students participated more than one sport and club.
Any follow-up question?
So is that nine hundred not differentiated? That's just total, so it could be, it could be one student in multiple clubs that would count multiple times.
Correct.
That includes the one student.
The athletes are, are one-offs.
Are individualized.
Are different, but the, the, the clubs are, could be, one student could be in five clubs.
Okay, next question. School store point-of-sale system, what are they using now? Would like more information about the school store too. Not familiar with it.
So we're very excited that the school store is up and running again. Um, so we have our students running that from the business and the marketing classes. And right now they're using cash only. And to do that, it really limits the, the sales that they can make, but it also limits the students, the purchases the students can make. So having a point-of-sale system is a computerized system and it's, it will help with the inventory. Right now they're using a notebook, which is very antiquated to take inventory and then do that, place the orders. Everything is by hand. So to have the point-of-sale, it's, it's like a little computer. It can do everything electronically for them and teach the kids a true business model where it's kind of embedded. They can download it into a sheet, um, then transfer it to Julie, who is our student activities fund director. Um, so it just really makes sense all around. The kids can use their credit card or debit card to make, you know, more purchases. They carry those more than they carry cash. So for us not to have kind of an outlet for them to, to use it is, we're not really servicing them.
Any follow-up questions?
So this is more of a follow-up comment, but that's, uh, an issue that I've had raised to me a couple of different times, not just, uh, on the subject of the school store, um, but on other types of fundraising activities, on, um, payment for extracurricular activities. Um, it seems like we've kind of stuck to cash and checks for a lot. And so I'm certainly gonna work with you folks, um, to try and, and increase the ability for students to use new things like Venmo or, or credit cards or debit cards. Um, and, you know, I think that, that extends to school lunch payments too. Um, there are some students who are, are frustrated um, at the, the kind of antiquated system that we use, um, unfortunately.
And maybe someone can answer this for me. I've been told by many admini- none of ours here, but of my own administrators that things like Venmo are like a big no-no for schools. And is that true? Because I don't actually know the answer to that.
My auditors aren't exactly looking favorably on that at all. Just saying.
Is, is there a reason?
The probability for fraud.
Okay.
The, we deal with TD Bank. We've been dealing with them for a very long time. We, we do a lot of stuff to prevent fraud. We do positive pay, which means every single check that we cut, they get a file of it. They get a copy of it. They get the check number, the amount, the payee, everything like that in advance of a person actually going to the bank. We have caught a number of people trying to cash checks twice who were perhaps a substitute, a vendor or something like that. We have caught checks that people have actually very, very closely recreated the check stock and just duplicated everything with the qua- if you get the right paper and the right check stock with the encoded information on it, you can do pretty much anything you want. Town of Peterborough, I think they got, uh, taken for around nine million dollars. We take this stuff exceedingly uh, seriously. So items like Venmo and Cash App and whatever it is, we try and steer away from them until we have a real good conversation with our banking people. Uh, because when you're looking at the amount of money that's collected and the amount of money, the cash balance is there on any given day, um, it's significant. And usually they start off with a little five-dollar check or they'll send you, the latest thing last couple of years has been, they'll send you a check for twenty dollars. It's a rebate from something, you know, or you overpaid and you get this check and you look at the, the pay, the, the vendor and you go, I don't recognize that. A lot of people will just take that and put that in the bank. No, we hold those things back. We check to see who the vendor is because a lot of time the fraudsters out there want you to deposit that check. And once you deposit that check, they have all your information. So it's a, it's a risky kind of business and we take it seriously. So that's why we don't dive into that headfirst right now. But it's not to say that, you know, as the technology evolves and the fraud protection evolves, you know, nobody wants to be T-J-Maxx and give away ten thousand social security numbers, right? Right? So we could go in that direction, but for now, we try and keep it, we try and limit it that.
I'd also add that Venmo, um, sometimes really holds business owners hostage because if you've got ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars rolling through your account a month, they'll freeze it and then they'll decide maybe in six months you'll get your money back. Whereas it works really well individually, like, you know, between you and me, um, I could see that if the Merrimack High School was taking Venmo, it's gonna, you know, it, it's the potential of getting flagged by Venmo.
Yeah, I certainly think that there needs to be a more updated solution, depending on what that is. Because, you know, we have like teachers who are going on field trips and we have students need to pay twenty dollars for each pay trip, uh, for, for each, uh, field trip, right? And so now teachers are becoming accountants and they're having to keep track of which students have paid, which students haven't paid. They're taking all this in in cash, right? They're having to keep it in their desk. They're having to keep it in envelopes. Um, so I think, I think it's just as messy of a system. Uh, it's just something we've been a little more used to.
That's gonna change.
And I was gonna say, and I agree and I, I appreciate that, you know, I, I'm here on all sides because I, I know that we, we don't want to be attacked and we don't want a cyber attack. And so this would be a really good place for Jason Pelletier to also tell us like, you know, our firewalls and how safe it is, but also to explore other schools and what they're doing, if there is some systems out there that might help us.
I mean, we, we have, um, we, we don't even have district credit cards. There's a lot of districts. There are a few districts that do have district credit cards and that's another source of fraud right, right away. It's a, a purchasing card that, that's actually affiliated with my personal association. Uh, even TD Bank is a little hesitant about those things. In fact, I, I checked with TD Bank if they were issu- if they were to issue us a card and they absolutely would not do that. So just because of the level of sophistication of the people out there trying to take money from us, we're very cautious. And cash may be messy. Cash may be really old-fashioned, but you know, I mean, it, it, it is a tried and true method. We do have for the lunch program, My School Bucks. We've had that for a ton of years. We use that for other groups. We're gonna be using it for adult ed. We have the, uh, what is it? Jason has the district, the Chromebook insurance thing. You can pay through My School Bucks. So that's what we're kind of utilizing. But from peer to peer or, or other stuff like that, i- it's kind of tough to have something that the school district puts its stamp of approval on and I can sleep well at night, so.
Well, maybe My School Bucks is the way, but because the other one I was thinking of Finn before you started talking was Class Dues. That's why every year I'm like, you know, one year, there was one year ago, he was like, I paid it. I swear I did. They had it written in a notebook and then they lost the notebook. And I was like, okay, just pay it again. You know what I mean? Like, we need a better system.
Parking.
Parking, like some of those things, yeah, I mean, not for nothing, if you look at my checkbook, the checks I write are mostly to the Merrimack School District for things. So, you know, nobody's writing checks anymore.
Yeah, you have to come up with, for, for every particular instance and, let's say it's parking, right? You have to come up with a unique code that's gonna flag it on your bank statement. Or when the bank statement comes in every month, it's like that thick and it's in an electronic file. You know, you have to sort this and figure out which two-digit, four-digit, six-digit code equals parking. So it's, it's good on one end, but it's difficult on another. And balancing cash in a organization that probably, you know, our budget's around ninety million dollars, but the inflows and the outflows are much more than that. And to try and balance cash, if you can't do that to the penny every single month, which what we do, you have nothing. And that's how you lose money.
Okay, moving on. There were a few supply lines with requests for more equipment due to increased enrollment. Can we have a list or summary of class offerings and how many students are in each?
Oh, okay, yeah. We, we provided you, remember Bill, maybe you asked for that back in October? Just a list of, uh, all of our classes and the rosters accordingly. So I don't, we can get that to you, but he does have an updated copy as of mid-October, I believe.
Okay, so you'll provide that to the board?
To you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And if you, I, I can send it along to you too, Bill. I have it.
Right, uh, do you know yet how close the estimate for the cost of the PSAT testing is for FOI 25?
Yeah, I did a little research on that. The PSAT nine costs about fourteen dollars per assessment. The PSA ten, uh, ten costs about eighteen dollars. We typically, since we're doing in-school PSAT day now, we're testing most of our students. So right around five fifty, we'll be taking the PSAT, so that totals up to about eight thousand dollars. Yeah, and another four grand for the SATs and there's your twelve.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanna say, um, the PSATs are our only progress monitoring tool for ninth and 10th grade. So one of the reasons that we introduced that, and I have been appreciative of the high school's willingness to continue with that, is they didn't have any normed data to look at. So some of the conversations, we just had our fall data review and I, I think we were able to have good conversations about how kids are doing. So I know that it's not as much as I ready, but it is the only tool that they have at the high school.
And not only that, you know, how, the more you take that SAT, PSAT, the better you do on the SAT when the time comes for you to take it. And so we want our kids to be able to have practice with that exact form of ta- test-taking, because it is something that matters immensely when they take it for college.
Yeah, and I, and, and once they take, and I, I know that you all are the experts, so jump in, but, um, once they take it, they also get a college board account. And there are more resources in that account, even if students are not going to a four-year college after high school. It could help them with college and career readiness, looking at things like what might I be interested in after high school? So even though it, yes, it prepares them to, you know, take the SAT and, and that would be primarily students that are headed off to a four-year school. But it also opens up resources, scholarship opportunities, and just different interest inventories that they wouldn't have access to until they took it as juniors.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to the police detail question since all five of us addressed that one and we'll cover the other questions come back. So moving on to page seven, one hundred, two, seven, two, four, eight, five, one, nine, three, one. How many teams made it to the final four in the final round competitions?
Uh, you're talking this fall, correct?
Yep.
We had three teams make the tournament. Our boys soccer team made the final eight, the quarterfinals, they had to travel to Hanover for their quarterfinal game. Our girls volleyball team also made it to the final eight, quarterfinals, and they traveled to, I believe, I wanna say Bedford. And then our football team made it to the preliminary round of the tournament and lost to Pinkerton in the first round of the tournament.
Any follow-up questions to that? Okay, uh, various lines on seven and nine, there are a few new lines for field trips. Are these new trips or moving funds for more transparency?
They're actually, they're new lines actually, because there were only, there were just a few departments that were asking to put them in the budget in the years past. And then other classes or departments would have charges for the students, but much like what Finn was talking about. So to provide equity, we're just putting them all in the budget. So we've asked each department what they would want and what field trips they want, and we planned accordingly.
So these are, these are field trips that, like, field trips that are continuing that have already been happening, we're just accounting for them better?
Yes.
Okay, page twelve. This is one hundred, two, seven, two, five, two, four, eight, five, one, nine, three, one. How many kids are using this so far?
The athletic transportation, um, we've had about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty students have used this for practice so far. This changes based on bus driver availability. Ideally, we would like to have all students take buses to off-site practices. We have scheduled thirty practice buses so far this year. The teams that have used them are girls soccer, cross-country, boys and girls track, co-ed spirit, and boys and girls Alpine skiing. The winter months typically require more transportation. We have a swim team that we don't have facilities to practice swim. Who else? A hockey, our hockey team has to go to a different facility, so that tip, that the practice transportation typically picks up in the winter.
Any follow-up questions?
Follow-up, um, I'm sure Matt can answer this. So our insurance provider, Primax, probably would not be happy if kids were driving other kids to practices in places that are, if we did not offer transportation and we had five kids in a car going to Reed's Ferry for soccer practice and there was an accident, that would be a liability for us.
There is the liability, I mean, years ago, years ago, probably five years ago, we had a, an opinion from Kathy Peel on, on this, that it, it wouldn't be best practice from a liability standpoint if we allowed that to happen, however it does happen. And in that case, we would have, especially like a voc ed program, if kids are going there and they're driving themselves because the bus doesn't align with the schedule, that, that does indeed happen. And, uh, you know, have them just sign, sign a waiver of liability. But it is preferable if we provide transportation to the best extent that we can.
I was one of those really mean moms that made my kids ride the school transportation, even when they had driver's licenses. Okay, any other follow-up question?
I guess I'll say I just asked that question because that was something that we had reintroduced last year and I was curious what the utilization had been so far.
Okay, page twenty-seven, one hundred, one, one, zero, five, zero, five, eight, six, four, eight, three, one. What is the anticipated logic and rhetoric class?
Oh goodness, who knows? I mean-
Not very logical.
I feel like it is a really good question and I wish that, I mean, do you, are you gonna make up an answer? Okay, great.
We spoke with Bill Maniotis today and he guided us.
Okay, Bill Maniotis is the best. And I've had good conversation with him, here's what I know, whatever the state decides, Bill Maniotis will cover it. We agree.
He's already thinking very, really fairly far ahead. He's already actually named the course, yes, here's the name.
And probably planted out, purchased the books in different languages and different differentiated levels. I know.
How'd you know? It's really just, it's, it's really born from the new graduation requirements that are going into effect next, well, the year after next. So, no, Bill, he's planning already for that, so it's going into our program of studies now. And he, we named the course just so it's more appealing to students, so they don't think that it, there, it's all about, you know, they have to public, publicly speak and it's all project-based, even though it is, but students are gonna have a lot of choice in that. So it's called the art of arguing and it's really persuasion and, and using-
Because you're calling it arguing. And that's perfect for teenagers.
Yes, it's the art of arguing. But it's really about persuasion, but using reasoning, you know, using rhetorical situations. So they're gonna be developing essays, they're gonna be analyzing books and novels, um, using that basis and premise. But again, it can't really be found, the foundation be done until we get really the standards on that, so.
I, I, I hate to say it, I'm excited about it, not so much the mandate, the unfunded mandate of it. But, uh, I teach logic to students. And we talk about deductive arguments and inductive arguments and we spend a lot of time in logical fallacies. I make them make videos pulling from commercials and television programs and movies, because there are logical fallacies everywhere. And so to even be able to create a persuasive argument, you have to recognize what not to do in your own argumentation. And I think it just is going to help students recognize the world around them that's lying to them through logical fallacies. And they'll be able to make better arguments in their English writing, in their history writing, in, you know, science uses philosophy, so their ability to make scientific conclusions, it, it impacts all of those things. If the state would just give us some money to pay for it, that would be better. Any follow-up questions? All right, page thirty-three, one hundred, fourteen, twenty, twenty-four, eighty-seven, thirty, thirty-one. This is about the championship banners, we're very excited about that. So I just wanted to mention that one more time, especially for, you know, First Robotics and Granite State Challenge. All right, let's tackle the elephant in the room, which is the police detail at high school events.
Sure, um, I think Ken had asked if this was a required change, it wasn't. It was, it started last year as a result of a conversation that Bill and I had shortly after a couple athletic events, school shootings. And, um, we, we decided that, um, at that time, we would offer a police detail of, at all of our sporting events, not just the ones that are, are, are most attended. So we did that and, um, we had a police officer at every, every home event. And, and then in August of this year, Bill and I met and we talked a little bit about whether or not we wanna continue with, with it this year. And, um, we decided that we would attempt to put it in the budget for safety and security reasons. The additional police present applies to, again, would apply to all, uh, home sporting events. Finn and I talked a little bit about if I had any data that suggests police presence reduces unnecessary disruption. I don't have any data to say that, but human nature tells me that people may be less likely to verbally attack an official, a player, a coach, or a fan of the opposing team if there is police present. You know, and I also believe that although a chant, there is, the chance of a violent incident is rare, it is possible. And as you know, we had another tragedy today in Wisconsin. So, you know, we're going on the premise that having a police officer that is trained and equipped to respond to a violent event does provide a stronger sense of safety and security for our families, our, our, our kids, and provides a faster response time should a violent event occur. So, um, that's, that was kind of the reasoning why we put it in the budget.
I have to tell you, I absolutely support this with a number of incidents that are happening around the country. And possible, always possible, in a wonderful community like Merrimack. As you said, people attacking officials, kids getting in fights, either during the contest or after it or before it. I'd rather be cautious and, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about it, Steve and I, rather be very cautious and make sure that everyone can enjoy a safe, uh, event. Instead of having, having our community in headlines because of something that has, has happened at, at, at an event of any type.
So I'm gonna take the other side, so, um, a very good friend of mine is the, uh, like the superintendent of Pinkerton Academy, the largest high school in the state of New Hampshire, Dr. Tim Powers. I served on the NHI executive committee with him, spirit committee for seventeen years. So I asked the question, like, how many police officers do you have at your events? And they have, um, police officers at football games that they know, like, that are gonna be a highly, like, Dairy versus Lunanderry, you know, because Dairy and Lunanderry are very competitive schools. Some basketball, but they don't have them at every athletic event. And, uh, again, so, you know, um, I know the, the police department is, you know, within a mile of the high school. And, uh, I think there are times that we need to have police, but to have police at every single school event, I don't think financially that it's something we could, we could sustain.
Yeah, and, um, you know, it's, I certainly understand the peace of mind that that would bring for sure. But, you know, I think of things like the cavalcade of bands, which that place is packed, packed. And, you know, are we now talking about police officers at events like that? And not that we expect anything violent to happen there, but, um, I just think we, if we're talking about having police officers at every event, we have to talk about every event. So, um, and I think that just, that gets to a point where, you know, if there's evidence that indicates that we're worried about something, I would say, yeah, absolutely, let's, let's look at that. But to say for every event, I, I think, um, we have to, I just think we have to take closer look at that, that's all.
And I would also add to that, that having been a, you know, a parent and a teacher that have, has been to every sport event, there are some sports where the crowd's just very minimal. Versus other sports where there's a lot of people, so you have a higher potential and higher risk. And so I, I agree, I think we need to look at, are we saying every event, or do we really need to look at, are we saying every football game, every basketball game, or, you know, where have we had student incidents? And where we had parent incidents and really break it down that way, at where, where's the higher risk?
Yeah, I, I think I see it someplace in the middle of all of that, because I've sat in cavalcade of bands thinking, I wish there was a police officer here, not because it was getting bananas, but because there's a lot of people and all would have to happen is the fire alarm would have to go off. I'm not even talking about a violent event. And it would be, it would be mayhem, not that, that you have them there for that. But, um, but, and I've also had my daughter come home from a basketball game and said, things went sideways. Like people, you know, were going crazy, there, you know, racial things were being said and it got out of control, it bubbled up. And, you know, I think at the time, it was just an athletic director that was trying to deal with that. And I thought, and I remember thinking as a board member, maybe we should have like some backup there for the athletic director who's trying to boot out people from another town or our own people out of an athletic event. You know how people are when you try to boot them out of an athletic event. And I have thought we, we've needed, you know, police for that. So maybe it isn't, like you just said, every single event, right? You know, swim team has home events. I will be going to one tomorrow, although I don't think it's a home event. But there's like, you know, no, ten people there and the parents, uh, there's like one of every parent, cause it's so crowded and, you know, so you're getting like twenty-five people there and nobody's, you know, causing any issues. You know, so I think it'd be interesting to parse it out a little bit more.
And I, along with, you know, the cavalcade of bands, think about the First Robotics qualifying, qualifying event. There were not only tons of teams there, but their parents and their coaches. And, I mean, I got there at like nine-thirty and you couldn't find a parking place. So you have a lot of outside people, not just two communities, but you have twenty communities. And, you know, that would be an event that I could see having a police presence, you know, those, those kind of, where we're, we're inviting a lot of communities and a lot of schools on, onto our property.
And I was going to say, I do think, um, going back to what Jenna said, you know, to have someone besides the athletic director, you know, uh, having administrators at sporting events and at musical events and, um, setting the tone of the climate and culture, what are the core values of our school? And, and making sure that kids understand the core values of our school. And then if somebody is breaking the core values of the school, then they leave the event and maybe they are suspended from events. That's gonna change how people act in certain situations. But you have to, you know, set the tone and then you have to be present. And I think more presence is maybe what we need.
Any other comments or questions on the police detail?
Yeah, so, so I've, I have two, because we talked a little bit about like every home athletic event. I, I presume that doesn't include things like swimming.
It has, it didn't last year, yeah. And, and I just wanted to say this-
It didn't last year, like it's going to this year?
No, probably not. It was more, it wasn't more of a, our conversations, Bill and I, were more not about crowd control. Cause we do attend events and, um, we do have game managers at events and the athletic director at events. Our conversation was more about, you know, having someone there in the most extreme circumstances. And I'd be, I'm definitely happy to talk more about that with all of you. Because to Lori's point, I do think at events such as robotics, when there's well over a thousand people there, there should be a police officer there. But, so, so yes, I hea- I hear everything that you're saying, I'm looking forward to talking more about it.
You said, you said you had two things.
I think, I think we're all good, yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, all right, any other comments or questions? Will you want to, thank you for listening to all of our questions and answering our questions, we appreciate it, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, thank you, have a good evening.
So on Wednesday, we will be discussing any changes that we want to make to the budget. So come prepared with those. I will ensure as we go through that, that the best way to move forward is to make a motion and I will make sure there's a second for every motion, at least for discussion. And so that's how, uh, I'm planning to run the meeting on Wednesday night. If you have any additional questions, feel free to send them to administration and CC Jenna and myself on those so that we at least just see what those questions are. If anything that, again, as you're looking at the budget tonight or tomorrow, that you see that, oh, I didn't ask that, or I have a follow-up question, be sure to send those in. Lori?
I thought I asked this last year, but I'm gonna request it again. I think it would be very helpful, um, to ask the athletic directors to attend the budget meetings. I think it would be very helpful to ask the athletic directors to attend the budget meetings. In the past, they always came in and presented their own budgets. And, you know, I, first of all, I like to see who they are, and I like to, you know, I've heard nothing but great things about Adam at the high school. But I, I do think that's a really good connection between us and the board. And also, I, I like the fact that they're presenting the work that they're doing.
Thank you. All right. We will move on then to the approval of the December second, twenty, twenty-four minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to accept those minutes.
Moved by Ken Martin, seconded by Lori Rothhouse. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, one abstentia, four, zero, one. Okay, we will have public comments on agenda items. If you would like to come make a comment, you may come to the back microphone, state your name and address, and if you're a student, you do not need to state your address.
So, hi, I'm Wendy Thomas. I don't really have a comment on an agenda item, although this is about the school situation in general.
Can you state your address for the record?
Sure, it's Ten Wildcat Falls. And I'm one of the representatives here in town up in Concord. We're hearing that a hundred and forty education bills have been filed. We don't know anything other than the titles at this point. Perhaps one of the most alarming ones is to remove the cap, any cap from the school vouchers, which would make them, it would blow the whole pro, program up. I mean, it would, it would blow pub, public school up. But if, by removing the, the cap, anyone in New Hampshire, regardless of your income, can now, would now be able to get a voucher. So, that's one of the ones that we're, that I'm keeping an eye on. We're working on the budget for the state right now. We're, we're starting discussions on that. So, I'm just gonna be popping in and out for these meetings, for the budget meetings, just keeping an eye on and letting you know what's happening up in Concord.
Chuck Mower, Ford Depot Street. I appreciate what a complicated task yours is. And one of the things I took some note of this evening was your discussions relative to police at school events. I'd like to offer you an alternative. I think it's important that anytime we can bring our school community and our larger community together, we are creating something much better than simply hiring a Pinkerton cop, if you will. So, I hope you, at least in your deliberations about that sort of thing, consider creating some kind of an auxiliary council of parents that would have a larger responsibility and some community training to meet the kinds of protections that you would like to see at school events. Again, bearing in mind that we have a wonderful police force here in Merrimack. They get paid exceptionally well by us, and they are never too far away. But as a first responder and a point of contact situation, I think that there's a great opportunity for parents to provide standards, guidance, rigor, and generally, the good characteristics of working with communities in difficult situations that we anticipate. So, I'd like you to consider some kind of auxiliary. Thank you.
I just wanna say, I appreciate that our state rep, Wendy Thomas, is here. You know, the New Hampshire Supreme Court is going to be, again, trying to look at the school funding formulas. It's gone all the way up, and it's going to be a crucial, critical ruling for the state of New Hampshire. But we do need to get, you know, school boards, try not to be political, but we do need to get our state reps to start being our voice in Concord and to understand that we are not gonna be able to keep adequately funding our public schools if we continue the projections that we're doing. And so, what happens for us, and, and, is we're always looking for ways to cut something. And most of us here, we, we, we want the best for our kids, and yet, here we are, like, trying to say, like, well, if we, if we do this versus this, and how about this for another year, can we hold this? And we don't wanna do that, but we're, we're trying to respect our community, our taxpayers, but we also have an obligation as school board members to educate our children. And so, it's a tough place to be. And so, I appreciate that you came tonight, and, and we're hopefully going to be able to invite everyone back to try to have those discussions.
And we will be drafting a letter, we have decided as a board, to all of our representatives and our state senator, because, as you know, we're fiftieth in the nation for state funding of public education. And even states that do have vouchers or some kind of educational accounts and things like that, they're still, their state funding is much, much higher than what we fund here. And so, if, if you have a moment in your free schedule, you might listen to our last board meeting. We had a very robust discussion about that issue, and in particular, that our property tax, taxpayers are bearing the greatest burden, as you know, as, as a taxpayer. And it can't keep, it just can't continue. That the pain needs to find a, a greater spread. And, you know, inflation goes down year over year, but inflation, and we have wonderful graphs that our administration provided for us in our budget book, everything goes up. Costs always rise. It's just how fast do they rise? And so, we're never going to have a budget that's ten million or twenty million less than it was last year. It's impossible. And every town in this, in the state is in the same position. So, we do our best to provide the best education for students, for the best outcomes, at the most efficient use of taxpayer dollars, but we have a state funding problem. And add to that the special education, what used to be catastrophic funding cut. We have more students now who need special education services than ever in our nation's history, because we know more, we do better. But tho, those special education cuts just put those monies right on every homeowner. And that's got to be fixed. So, thank you.
Real quick, I just wanted to bring up the ELO program at Merrimack High School, which is kind of in, in a little bit of a gray space in terms of budget, because some of it's covered by the high school, but I know that Harley Hall requests his own stuff in collaboration with graduation pathways. And so, the real thing that I was a little concerned about was the ELO stipend. So, right now, ELO stipends are a hundred and fifty dollars for half a year if a teacher wanted to run an extended learning opportunity. And so, I know that you were talking about teaching logic, and we have a Language, Truth, and Logic class at Merrimack that almost never runs. And so, this year, and he's gonna be very mad that I call him out, but Mr. Fliss, Joe Fliss, who, who usually runs the Language, Truth, and Logic class, said to me and another student, okay, I'll, I'll run it. So, he takes his planning period every day, and, and we sit down, and, you know, various levels of involvement. We are relatively independent learners, but he's still there with us, assisting and helping out. And so, I think the, the line item that I wasn't able to find in the budget book, but what Harley Hall submitted to, I think, either the district office or the MHS office, was for thirty thousand dollars. That would be for a hundred ELOs. I don't think we expect to reach a hundred ELOs, but, you know, to, to cover. I would love to see that stipend be increased to two hundred, three hundred dollars per semester. Because when you look at, if he was to take his planning period that he spends with us and sub, he could make that a hundred and fifty dollars in four days of subbing, right? Because you're getting forty dollars a period for subbing. But instead, he's running this program that he appreciates. And, and we were going over many of the same things. So, we were, you were talking about logical fallacies. We were talking about inductive, deductive logic. We're, we're going into our predicate logic unit right now. And so, we're doing some really incredible stuff. And I think as a way forward for, I, I know last year we talked a lot about, you know, allowing, we have a lot of support for students who are falling behind. And in terms of allowing students who are ahead to kind of find their own pathway, to advance their own learning, it, it really is almost like a volunteer position for the teachers, right? Having to take this time and push in as much as possible. So, on Wednesday, when you guys are looking at what, what to increase, what to decrease in the budget, I would certainly advocate for an increase in that line item so that Harley Hall and, and MHS and the district office would feel more comfortable increasing that semester stipend.
So, I, I agree with a lot of it. I think that what you're talking about, though, it is an extended learning opportunity, but it's actually creating a class, which, so I think, like, extended learning opportunities are, when you have a mentor, somebody checking in, you're doing a lot of individualized learning. What you're doing is you're actually, you created a class where a teacher's giving up there. So, that should be like a, we, and I love it, and I, I really appreciate that teacher's passion for learning, to give up the prep period, to come in and work with students. That's amazing. But I think that should be funded in a different whole line. I don't, I don't think three hundred dollars a semester is enough.
No, I completely agree with you.
It's like we, we've created a course, and that's amazing, but there should, so I think ELOs should be someplace, but this should be something different, but I love it.
Certainly. I think, I think unfortunately, the, the ELO has kind of fallen to fill the void. So, like, we didn't run, we didn't, right, right, exactly. We didn't run Calculus BC, which is, which is Calc II, which is offered by the College Board. So, I think we had seven or eight students take ELOs with Chisholm instead of running the class, right? So, w, w, we're kind of using that, and we're saying, well, these students can learn, but we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And then, they all have to find periods in their schedule where they're able to meet with him. And, you know, every teacher's able to put in a little bit of a different amount in terms of what they wanna do. But, but I, I agree with you, standardizing or, or creating a program that is, is in, in independent study with a teacher where you're able to work with them more directly.
Exactly. I think, and, and I really like that you're gonna do it before Wednesday, because it gives us time to try to brainstorm what that looks like, but it's good.
Well, and I also think that's gonna give administration an opportunity to look at where those fundings are and be able to come back to us Wednesday with, this is how we would fund that versus the ELOs. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, is there more? I didn't see anymore. Oh, come on up, Shannon.
My name is Shannon Rand, One Blair Road. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, Matt, just the sports and how we can help fund these booster programs and these clubs. I know that Finn was talking about, like, Venmo or PayPal or something like that. There are a lot of different things that our sports communities can use. But I think to bring more money and to help these students, we need to really start looking at, like, what are those safe places? There isn't a lot for booster clubs to use right now. And it would be great if the school could share with these booster clubs and with the high school or middle school athletic directors, like, what we can use. Because it's really tough bringing in that cash. It's, it's a lot of work on the, on the volunteers. And I know that there are, like, caps, like, with nonprofit organizations, like, such as, like, a booster club for cheer. If we make over fifty thousand a year, we can't have our, we can, we can't have, like, certain tax advantages and stuff like that. I don't know if there's availability to have the school help these booster clubs and these athle, these, these different types of sports. Yeah, that's just things that I'm pondering, because it's, it's really tough on the volunteers. We don't know where to go, and I know there's a lot of things that, like, Adam is asking from these booster clubs of what he needs, and there's not a lot of information out there. So, if you could help us out, that would be great.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye, second.
Moved by Ken Martin, seconded by Lori Rothhouse. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, five, zero, zero. Thank you, and good night.